At this time, I'm going to bring the Cass County Plan Commission meeting to order for Tuesday, March 5th. To begin with, I'd ask Krista to, Secretary, to do the roll call.
Jim Donato.
Here.
John Geist.
Here.
Josh Ladani.
Here.
Mike Kinsey.
Here.
Stacy Odom.
Here.
Kristen Collins here.
Jim Sailers.
Here.
Ben C. Hayes.
Here.
Brian Reed.
Here.
Okay. With that, each of you had minutes mailed to you from our February 5th meeting. Is there any discussion or correction that you made to those minutes? Is our motion accepted?
Seconded.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, today, we're going to be, first on the agenda is going to be a public hearing. That'll be for the Wind Ordinance Resolution Number 1901. The way we'll proceed with this public hearing is our staff will be presenting the proposed resolution based on the committee from the Plan Commission that reviewed the existing ordinance. And Erin and the staff will present those, that report to everyone. There may be possible corrections. I know there was a couple typos. We're basing this off of what was posted on the website last week, so there may be some typo corrections or potentially amendments, et cetera. Because it is a public hearing, we will be providing an environment where everybody will have the opportunity to speak if wishes to. With that said, we will limit the public comments to five minutes per individual. We would ask that you be brief and to the point. We want to hear everybody that has something they want to say. We'd ask that you not repeat the same thing over and over again, as that will just cut into the amount of time that the other people that may have something important to say would have the opportunity to say. We'd also like to be sure that we keep the comments relevant to this hearing for the wind ordinance. We'd ask that every presenter will step up to the microphone and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name and address. We'll also have a timer right here on my left, your right. And Erin will be also watching the timer, so when we approach the five minutes, you'll be aware of that. So if there's something you want to be sure you get in, you'll have the timer to try to include that. We'd ask that everybody be respectful and considerate. If at any one time, somebody finds that they cannot do that, we'd ask that you leave the meeting. Okay, with that, Erin, would you begin the review?
Yes. So first part of this, we're going to talk about the commercial towers. So I am showing basically the page that shows current and proposed changes. What I also did was show what was being striked out of the current changes, and then I put red with what we added. And then in some areas where there was some, because of having the two different documents, there was some typos and different things, those will be in green, and I'll point those out for you. So you can see the current language here where we did not have a height limit, and now we are proposing a 600-foot height limit. And we added also the Department of Defense, or stricter, instead of just the Aviation Administration being able to rule over that height. I did try to put some pictures in here to help understand certain setback requirements. So on those, it will show the current, and then I'll go through the next slide that will show the proposed. So the current property line setback was a blade width from the property line. So based off a 600-foot tower, it's roughly going to be 233 feet from the property line. Now that is the current ordinance. Our proposed is to go 2.5 times the height, no less than 1,500 feet from the property line. So you can see here, it would be 1,500 feet instead of the 233. Current residential dwelling setback. So I'm showing both here of setback from the property line at 233, which is the current, and then the current from the residence. I'm showing this as a participant. So if someone had a farm ground and they had a rental house or their house on the property, we would still require them to have a certain setback from that house in addition to the property line. So that's what that's kind of showing there. And then with the changes that we're recommending, it would be 2.5, no less than 1,500 feet away. So even on a participating, they would be 1,500 feet away from the house and then 1,500 feet away from the property line. We also went through and decided to increase some of the setbacks for the more general requirements, and so you can see, and there's going to be quite a few of these, where we changed from 1.1 to 1.5 times the height of the tower. So that's for public right of ways, other right of ways. And then when we got to state and federally owned property, it used to only say own public conservation land, and we wanted to specify that was state and federally owned, and that it used to be 750 feet, and we are requiring the 2.5, no less than the 1,500, like we are for the property line and the dwelling. Incorporate limits, it used to be 1,500 feet, and we're increasing that to a half a mile. Above ground electrical, this would be the change from the 1.1 to the 1.5. And then there's some footnotes that are given for the residential and the property line setbacks, and so this is what we're going over here. Previously, we had a setback from the property line of 233 and a required setback of 1,000 feet from the house. So if any addition would happen within that 1,000 feet, they wouldn't be allowed to, or they would have to go to the BCA, and that's why it's in red. By changing that to the 1.5, and/or having that setback from the property line of 1,500 feet, you would be able to do those additions and showing that in black. Also, a new footnote that we would want to do, and you can see in green, my spell check changed it to these, it was supposed to be no less. This is a whole new section that we're wanting to add, where if the BCA or if a split would occur later on, that they would have to be 2.5 or 1,500 feet away unless they signed MOU, basically stating that they know that they're going closer to a tower and there may be some issues with doing that. So the non-commercial and micro, so non-commercial would be an individual or a company that puts maybe one tower on their property. A micro is usually a company or a resident that put it on their actual rooftop. So the property line setback here, we're changing from the 1.1 to the 1.5. Again, for the residential dwelling. This was another error where I hadn't striked the right one on the current language. The current language is the 1.1, but I know online it was 1.5. So this is still changing that 1.1 to 1.5. Again, other right of way, 1.1 to 1.5. And above ground, electric, 1.1 to 1.5.
You need something, Erin? You need anything? Pardon me? I thought you needed something.
He's checking.
No, no, no.
Minimum setback for met towers. So this was something that was in the green, what was previously put in there. It was actually supposed to be striked in the red portion, so if you actually looked at this language from this one, it was correct, but when I switched it to the other version, it did not get taken over. So it's taking out the 1.1, and the setback requirement is waived if the affected adjoining landowners' shares at common property line, and we made sure that there would be a fully executed waiver if that would occur versus just being able to waive it. Residential dwelling, 1.1 to 1.5. 1.1 to 1.5 on public right of way, and again, this is for met towers. Other right of way, 1.1 to 1.5. And now getting into more of the construction and safety design. So in the safety design for electrical components, we struck the international, and then we added the cables or lines in field shall be buried or trench. Trenching shall be determined in the road use and drainage agreements, which would have to be done for any project that's moving forward. This is a new section that we currently don't have, and it's anti-icing technology, basically making sure that any turbine system that's being used is using the best technology to prevent icing. And then this is another new section that we didn't have before, topsoil prevention plan, making sure that, you know, they're not getting rid of the topsoil, that they're actually going to be putting it back and that there be a plan for that so that any crops or anything around the area would still be able to use that topsoil. Noise, as you can see in the green, it actually still had a strike through. It is going to be striked, but the current language doesn't have a strike, so that might have been confusing to some. So it actually is to the nearest resident currently. We're looking to strike that. And having the 60 decibels to the nearest property line, and then also adding that for commercial. Currently, it's just for non-commercial, and so they would have to be 60 decibels at the property line as well. And then we wanted to put in there that all noise concerns can be documented and mitigated will be determined by the county commissioners and consulted with the wind company. Another section that we didn't have anything on that we added was about flicker, and we wanted to make, we looked at some different ordinances as well as the Michigan State University research to come up with the no more than 30 minutes a day and no more than 30 hours a year on a residential structure where flicker should occur, and then some mitigation on there of how to go about mitigating it. Decommissioning plan, we added a section about the financial assurance where they would have to relook at the cost every five years. Previously, it was just, we need to look at financial assurance when they first apply, so we want to relook at that every five years to make sure if it needs to go up or down. The drainage agreement, one of the things is that we know there might be some concern after construction is done, so we added in that up to five years after construction, they would have to work with us to address any proper field damage, pile damage. This section is new also. We wanted to add in some information about drainage and roads and the plans that they would have to provide and what time they would have to provide it and who they would have to provide it to. So you can see they're going to provide it to the commissioners within 60 days of prior project commencement. And drainage, we also stated that it would be 100 feet where the tower construction is and all transportation routes. So there might be some transportation routes that are through a field, and they would have to meet that and look at anything that they might have disrupted by doing that. Assurance, we just wanted to make sure, this is a new section as well, to add in the two forms of financial assurance for repair bond and a performance bond on the road and drainage, pre and post-construction. This is also a new section. We just wanted to make sure that they, there was something in there stating that they needed to notify the highway superintendent when there's limited access or road closures. That's what we have. Any questions on what I presented today from the board? And this is what was discussed at committee.
Any board member with questions at this point in time? Thank you, Erin, appreciate it. At this point in time, I would ask if there's anyone from the audience that would like to comment. I remind you, please step up to the microphone, introduce yourself, your address. We will have the timer going. Erin will kind of give us a little heads up if you can't see the clock, so with that.
Paige Woodhouse, I live at 4477 West State Road 16, Royal Center. I would like to remind you that I'm speaking as Paige Woodhouse. My views and information are based on my own personal findings, research, and data. I am not speaking collectively for the residents of Cass County that identify themselves as part of Cass County property rights. I can assure you that although we have united as Cass County property rights, we all have our own views on this matter. I would like to thank you for agreeing to review this ordinance. I would like to thank the committee for the meetings that you guys held, the research that you completed to develop these proposed changes, and I truly appreciate these proposed changes. Doesn't mean that I'm happy with every one of them, but these proposals are far better than what we currently have, and I truly appreciate that. So thank you very much for doing that, but I do have some concerns still. So 523.04, location. Why is it that we continue to sell out the northern part of the county? Table A provides a district use standard. Why do we allow any exceptions? If wind development is good for Cass County, then it's good for Cass County. Period. End of discussion. Do not have the exception of the Northern County Line to 200 North. Take every proposed project through the same hoops of the board zoning appeals and any other requirements that they may have to do to fully comply with the provisions. I know I was told that this is the error because of the Grissom overlay, but once again, I remind you of the military operating airspace. I understand that you put a disclaimer in there regarding the Federal Aviation Administration and the Department of Defense. Well, then include Grissom in that disclaimer and have the whole county on equal grounds. Do not sell out the northern part of the county with an easier route for wind. Part C, setback requirements. I truly appreciate the change to the measure from a property line. The visuals were very helpful, Erin, I appreciate that. However, when I look at that II, the towers may be placed up to the property line if a recorded written waiver is secured from the affected adjoining landowners. If your job is to create an ordinance that is safe for people of Cass County and your research shows that 1,500 is safe, it doesn't matter if landowners sign an agreement, it doesn't matter if there's a memorandum of understanding, we need an ordinance that protects the people of Cass County. If Cass County has a set limitation of 600 feet tall turbines to the tip of the blade, then the wording of this ordinance, from my understanding, is redundant and just adds additional confusion. 2.5 times the height of the tallest turbine, 600 feet, is 1,500 feet. The proposed changes says no less than 1,500. So this leads me to believe that the setback to a property line, regardless of the height of the turbine, is 1,500 feet. Plain and simple, correct? So I'm just questioning the redundancy of that wording. There's no way around, it says no less than 1,500 feet, and we can't have taller than 600 feet turbines, so it's 1,500 feet. That was answered. I do ask that in, last spring, I mailed all of you, besides Mr. Reed, who was not on this board at that time, information from the U.S. Department of Energy's National Renewable Energy Laboratory regarding research that they completed at their Wind Technology Center. Based on that research, a setback from a residential dwelling should be 3.5 times the overall turbine height. If the ordinance is subject to reasonable restrictions and are intended to preserve the health and safety of the public, I would ask that, are you doing this by allowing a turbine to be 1,500 feet from a residential dwelling? You have increased the setback to 1.5 times the total height of the wet tower to the edge of the public road right of way. I know that some would say that I'm young and dumb, but my understanding is I pay my property tax to the center of the roadway. How could a setback to a roadway be different if that is a property line? Would this not have to be equal or greater to the measurement of a property line? What research did you use to propose a half-mile setback from the Wauwabish River and the Eow River? If we're protecting them, we should protect our homes. With less than a minute, I would like to address the fact that we are an agricultural community. 523.07, operation and maintenance interference. Pre-construction statement regarding GPS interference shall be between the company and the complainant. I'm not sure if you are aware, but my husband and many other farmers work from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. during planting and harvest. Do you think that they're going to have time to contact a wind company to file a complaint regarding interference with their GPS system? And then it goes on to state that if a remedy is not met, the count within 90 days, appropriate action will be taken and the wet may become inactive. So 90 days later, now the snow is flying, the corn is still in the field, and these monstrosities are sitting idle doing nothing because they've interfered with the GPS system of our agricultural community. I will leave my combined speech and the information that I talked about with Stacy since I'm out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, we appreciate the work you went through when you do this. Name and address. Jim Beecher, 6526 West, 50th North Royal Center. I think you've been fair. We don't want to give up quiet many rights as we have by setbacks. We do agree with the joining of landowners, because I have landlords that would like to be in a wind project and would like to pull their ground, and there would be no complaints with that. The noise level concerns me to the fact that we all have grain systems in there noisy. Not, the grain system isn't much of an issue. I think we're getting in shady ground here. There could be a lot of grain systems. Will not meet the criteria of this, and I realize it's just for wind. And I come from a long line of Republicans, which shouldn't be political. We've always been, protect our ground. We don't like people telling us what to do. A lot of spot zoning, which was not to be for the farm area, turned out it is, and that's probably a good thing. But we don't appreciate other people trying to tell us what to do with our ground. We should do nothing on our ground while there's anybody else. And I do appreciate Gary, but thank you.
Good morning. Laura Redwood, 5524 County Route 600 East, 12 mile. You pointed out the sound, which is really kind of what I wanted to hit, hit home. Noise and vibration, commercial wet shall be no greater than 60 decibels from a non-participating property measured from the nearest property line. In the force charts that I gave you last month, they all said the same thing. Normal conversation office is 50 to 65 decibels. So when you talk about grain bins, about, you know, the loudness and stuff like that, keep in mind grain bins are about a month that they're running. You, when you have sleeping children or people who work the night shift, they're trying to sleep, everybody's like, you know, trying to keep it down. So you go through the Michigan State University Extension Land Use Series, which used to help come up with some of this. And on page 13, it says concerning sleep disturbances. The World Health Organization notes that 80 to 90% reported cases of sleep disturbance in noisy environments are for reasons other than noise originating outdoors. Okay, so what that would mean is when you're trying to sleep inside, things that are going to wake you up would be like somebody dropping something, coughing, a door shutting, laughing, crying, sneezing, et cetera. Anything like that is going to wake somebody up most likely. So whenever they have something, then they have like footnotes, like where they got this information. So you look down at the footnotes, and it comes to the World Health Organization, they went by the community, the guidelines for community noise, 141 pages. So what they failed to say in the rest of this MSU study was the rest of this, in the sleep disturbance. It says exposure to nighttime noise induces secondary effects. The secondary effects include reduced perceived sleep quality, increased fatigue, depressed mood, well-being, decreased performance. Long-term effects, various studies have also shown that people living in areas exposed to nighttime noise have an increased use of sedatives or sleeping pills. To conclude that study, it goes down to if negative effects on sleep are to be avoided, the equivalent sound pressure level should not exceed 30 dBAs indoors for continuous noise. Noise events exceeding 45 dBAs should therefore be limited if possible. For sensitive people, an even lower number would be preferred. Okay, so yes, that concerns me. And when you talk about their mitigation, so my questions would be, how will the decibel level be measured? Who will be the one determined, who does the measuring? How will it be dealt with if it exceeds? Are there going to be fines? Is there a table that's going to show, you know, first instance, second instance, you know, go from there? What will the timeframe for the remediation be for all complaints? Will there be measurements at least four times different, four times throughout the year? Because we know winter is a much more quiet month than what summer is, so it should be measured at different times of the season because of the noise. And then as far as a complaint resolution, still there isn't anything to do with how we supposed to, you know, you're going to talk to the wind company, but how are we supposed to proceed, you know, and do this? So those are just some of the, some of the questions. Now fortunately, we live 300 feet from our property line, so the noise is going to be different when it comes to our house. Unfortunately, there are people that live a lot closer, you know, 50 feet, so it's going to be greater, and it's going to be more of an impact to them. You talk about the anti-ice and trying to get the most recent technology and stuff, and how important it is. Did you know there's shadow detection technology because of shadow flicker? Vestas even said shadow flicker impacts people that live in close proximity to wind farms, and therefore almost also impacts the community acceptance for wind turbines. Okay, so they actually said that there is an issue, they've actually fixed it. So I gave you last month also information that you could get ahold of me, I could get ahold of the person. This is, I kind of give it all on the paper. This is his distance from where the turbine is, from west central, to his residence and what he deals with every day. And that is 1,869 feet. Go on to safety zone.
Half of your time is out.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm going to pass this out to you really quick, because it talked about the safety setback for the no-wager. So here are. Yes, yes. So anyway, and there was a little discrepancy of two feet. So instead of the no-wager zone, it says, I know, the evacuation, I should say, as a 2410, it's actually 2424, because this is based on their safety manual for a 406-foot tower. So, thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning. Ruth Baker, 1808, West County Road, 500 North, Logan's Port. On February 5th, I presented to the plan committee a suggested revised version of Cass County Ordinance Number 523 Wind Energy Conversion System. Included with the suggested revised version were nine pages of research and facts pertaining to how I arrived at all of those changes. The revised changes from the subcommittee, from the plan committee, have since been posted on the Cass County Government website. It is disturbing to read these changes since the documents used were from the sample zoning for wind energy systems from Michigan State University and other ordinances from various counties in Indiana that have allowed wind turbines into their sparsely populated counties. It appears that this matrix was used to arrive on how ordinance were allegedly changed for the health and safety of the citizens of Cass County. The first paragraph from the Michigan State University article says, "One should not assume the concept and rules for zoning or other regulation by Michigan municipalities and counties apply in other states." In most cases, they do not. This is not original research or a study proposing new findings or conclusions." End of quote. Today, I would like to inquire about 523.04, Regulations on Page 2, under C. Minimum setback distance for commercial wax towers. There needs to be some clarification about the public road right-of-way measured from the center of the wax tower to the edge of the right-of-way. Hypothetically, this could translate to mean that if two landowners sign up for wind turbines and the location is across the road from each other, the measurement would be 1.5 times the total height of a 600-foot wax tower to the edge of the right-of-way. This would equate to 900 feet on either side of the road. Who pays taxes and owns property to the middle of the road? Should this be 1,500 feet measured from the center of the wax tower to the middle of the road? But let's not forget about the 1,640-feet evacuation zones in the wind turbine safety manuals for a 262-foot wind turbine. Drop down to the bottom of Page 2. Other rights way, such as railroads and public utility easements, again, measured from the center of the wax tower to the edge of the right-of-way. Do the people that work in these professions in Cass County deserve safety? If this ordinance passed, they would be working 900 feet from the wind turbine. Other issues in this ordinance gives me concerns include the height of a wind turbine shall not exceed 600 feet, while the military MOA height restriction is 500 feet, the noise level of 60 dBA, and the flicker on non-participants' property. Does that sound like health and safety of the citizens of Cass County is being addressed? No, not from the research I presented to the plan committee last month. Do I think the changes in the ordinance are enough for Cass County? No. Are they better than their, than what is there now? Yes. Should there be additional improvements? Absolutely. Please note that again, from the article, from the zoning wind energy system from Michigan State University also states, and I quote, "Persons holding traditional values, family, safety for loved ones, honoring elders, showing respect, self-discipline, and resistance to temptations shall have a strong link to a person with a strong self-identity to place and which is likely to include skepticism of wind farm economic benefits." If I'm holding on to traditional values with strong self-identity to the safety and health of Cass County, then I'm guilty. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else?
Hello, good morning. Leslie Murray, Leander's 8288 East, County Road 415 North, Logan's Port. A lot of the things that I would have come forward and spoke with you guys have already been covered. I understand you don't want redundancy. I appreciate that as well. I do got to compliment you in the fact that you have actually addressed some of the issues with the wind turbine ordinance in this county. I don't think it's restrictive enough in a lot of ways. The height limit is good. The sound definitely is not restrictive enough. I know you've been presented with oodles of information regarding the sound. The flicker on the residents, you've limited it to 30 minutes a day and 30 hours a year. Well, that's basically 30 minutes a day for 60 days, two months out of the year. If it was flickering on my house, I wouldn't like that a bit, and it affects your health, let alone property values and everything else in the area. The flicker should not even be allowed on a non-participating residence whatsoever. Such a violation of property rights and your peace in the county. The last thing I, I want to comment on, just because everything else I wanted to comment on pretty much has been covered, is this 1,500-foot. You were presented a petition, or the Cass County Commissioners were, starting, I looked through my notes, it was a year ago in December. And we had, I think at this point, and you'd have to have someone a little more involved in it, almost 2,000 signatures requesting a setback of 2,640 feet or a half a mile. The only place in your new ordinance that you've even addressed this at all is with the river, either the Eel or the Wabash River. You know, if that's so important to keep those safe, I really think that that importance should be placed on the rest of the county. And I think 2,640 feet is an acceptable setback. This 1,500-foot doesn't work at all for me. Anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Warm my way through. Hi, guys. Thank you very much for looking for advice. Joyce Pazel, 3296 North, County Road 400 East, Logan's Port. Jim, don't take a deep breath. I'm going to be decent, okay? This is a purely mechanical thing. I'm a farm girl. I help down tractors and all that stuff. But I'm just wondering, and I'm, I'm sorry to be so perseverating on all of this, but the decibel thing kind of bothers me. So here's, here's my mechanical question to you guys. You've already, some of you have dealt with RES. And I would assume there's nothing happening at this very second, but we don't know that. So by what means does a wind company control the decibel level? How do they do that? If you've got a tower and it's a little loud, I mean, what, how do you guys, when, when you're working with these companies, how does a company control the, the decibel level? Is there some mechanical means that can, can help with that? Am I, what am I? Am I 21? I'm 41. I'm going to back it up. Okay, but here's my, wait, I backed up. If that's, if that's the only means of controlling me, my noise level is backing up, then I guess I would appreciate a backup on the wind turbine near my home. Just saying, there's a perfect example. Did somebody give me an answer? I wanted, honestly, I wanted.
If, if the wind turbine company cannot meet the requirements that it would allow to build, these rules don't hold.
Okay, so you guys would do that for us? And, and if it's built and it exceeds?
They have to shut it down.
And will you guys marshal that? Who marshals that? You do, so I can invite you out to my house and you can take your little decibel thing and?
We've been to the bar.
You have? Okay.
And that's covered. In the proposal is that the county commissioners would be responsible to the public to go to the wind energy company and could go as far as shutting down a tower if in fact it was exceeding.
And you guys would give a plus on that?
If they don't meet the requirements, they're ordinance.
Well, that's my whole, that's exactly right. So in that respect, I appreciate that.
If they're averaging 70 decibels, the commissioners and the county commissioner will enforce the ordinance.
Same way with the flicker, if they don't have to shut the turbine down.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, these proposals, I mean, if they're not an average company, there'll be repercussions. These are rules. Either we do it or don't. If you don't, you can take your turbine down.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm not sure I like that ad, Jim.
Dave Redwick, 5524 North, 600 East. I really wasn't going to say anything because pretty much everything I wanted to say, everybody's been saying. But one thing Ryan just said kind of bothered me. He said the average. So was there going to be an average?
I didn't say average.
Yeah, you did. If you play back the tape right now, you said an average.
I said if they're averaging 70 decibels.
Average, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, if they're averaging, that's above 60. If they're averaging 70, that's probably a higher than 60.
Okay, so what happens if we have a spike of 80? And then back down is the average again?
Well, we still, we still have in the ordinance that it has to meet the 30 minutes for up to 30 days.
That's what I was, the only I was concerned about was we're not going to average.
What you have to, the ordinance is set to say 60. It's kind of like, the speed limit's 35. If they're caught above that, they're fine. I mean, there's not a provision in the ordinance that says you average 60, so you spike up and down. It's, that's the limit. You don't exceed the limit.
Okay, that's the only thing I was getting at.
And that's not a problem.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be, okay, we're going to average it out for an hour or two hours.
If you have a, if you have a noise that exceeds that, okay, and you as a landowner say, hey, I've got this app, and they're, and you call the commissioners and they come out and they're like, look, they're hot. They can go right to it and say, you've got to shut this down because you're above the order. That's, that's fully within your right, and that's how the ordinance is.
Well, that's the only thing that bothered me when you said average.
Yeah, we're not going to.
That's all I was doing.
The limit is the limit. Like, start anything else.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, very good.
Is there anyone else?
Morning. Bill Rogers, 1361 East, 615 North. And just the one concern that I wanted to bring up, I don't think it's been anywhere in any of the information I've seen so far, but that's the concern about the potential devaluation of property of houses that are close to, or in the proximity of a wind farm. And was just interested if this ordinance could address that issue for homeowners in this area.
Sarah Craig, 5684, North County Road 600 East, 12 mile. I wasn't going to say anything today, but the first question that brought me to any meetings regarding wind is still on my mind here today. And I have some friends who have children with autism. And they are especially sensitive, and I also have friends with epilepsy. And they are especially sensitive to lights such as shadow flicker. They can't go anyplace. If there was a party, they couldn't go anyplace where there would be strobe light because they could have seizure, cause a seizure. Also, the autism causes them to just react more strongly to these kinds of problems. The vibration, it's not just noise, it's vibration that people feel in their homes. If you don't believe me, please research it more. I would like to know if there would be special exception for those, for people with children like that or people that have that handicap in their home to get an extra distance of setback compared to everybody else because of their special problems? Because it wouldn't be fair for them to have to move to be able to deal with everyday life. Exactly. Also, I am, I don't mean to be redundant here, but what about the property values? What will happen if our property value goes down because of the, if this is, if there's ever a project built here, I know there's not one currently, or at least they say there's not currently on the books. What if there is one built here? And what if our property values do plummet? Because I don't want to live near one, so I wouldn't expect somebody to want to buy my house near one. So will there be any kind of property value guarantee? Any kind of, you know, like would the county buy my house if it became unsellable within a certain amount of years or anything like that? Those are the questions that I still have that don't have answers. And I hope that at some point they can be addressed before these ordinances are changed and pushed through.
Anyone else at this time?
Hi, my name is Billy Cooper, 4786, West 900 North, Royal Center. I do want to thank you for the work you guys did in amending a lot of what wasn't met, wasn't, wasn't even mentioned. And the one thing that kind of, this sticks with me is this magic number of 2,640. You know, I mean, it doesn't take a lot to look at flat look and start drawing mile circles around the house. Every house you see in the county. It quickly won't make any idea of anything ever happening as far as alternative energy, especially wind energy. I, I don't know that that last group that was in here was the right group to, to work with. There were a lot of unseemly and shady things that I was told that had happened. I think it's, you know, your responsibility to do diligence and research and finding if this would ever happen, a partner that's on the up and up. I think that, you know, it's, it's, and you guys all know, it's your job to, to research this to the fullest and try to do this in an unbiased manner with the best interest of the community. I don't know what any of those magic numbers are. I just know that, you know, if you take a half mile, I own a little bit of property. I don't own a lot, but my property would be consumed by that half-mile radius. Okay, I mean, I respect what people are saying as far as wanting to protect their rights on their properties, but I also would like respect in being able to protect my rights for my property. And I'd also like to thank one of the board members here for removing their no-wind sign once it was made public that we were going to have this committee to determine what those setbacks and boundaries may be. That's not all I have to say.
Hi, Brenda Russ, 4127 North, Royal Center, Pike, Royal Center. I'm going to sit back. I'm not going to be big and redundant on it, but I do want to, I have a question in that I don't understand if RES's own safeties setback is to get 1,650 feet away from a turbine if it's having trouble, how can we have a house 1,500 feet from it? I think that needs to be, I think we need to see their own safety where they tell their workers to get back. And I believe that's a 300-foot tower or some, I have not done a lot of research, haven't planned on saying anything.
Four or six.
I think we need to look at their safety, and we shouldn't have any houses any closer than that at least. Thank you. I do appreciate the work you're doing.
Atmosbiker, 4794 West, 625 North. I guess I won't say I appreciate all your work. I've sat here and watched people on the telephone for, while I was watching the clock, for two minutes, watching people not pay much attention. So I listened to a whole bunch of information that was given that was quite obviously not looked at. So I don't have much to say except for I do wonder why I would be paying property taxes in an area that is deemed acceptable for wind, when two-thirds of the rest of the county is not acceptable. That's, I don't know what you would call that, but it's, there's nothing that's remotely fair about that. Just one of my concerns.
Can I ask you on a question? When you had put, one of the things that you guys were looking at was the Indiana comparison charts? And what year was this made?
I don't know myself. In the office, I don't remember.
Were these available online?
Well, we got all of our ordinances and different things online, and then looked at what you submitted also. So I think some of that might have been part of what you submitted.
The ones that we did, okay, you're, so you're talking about the ones that we gave you that had all the different counties?
Yeah, and then we looked at, we looked at specific counties ourselves that we pulled out that were in the area or we specifically had wind or didn't want wind. And then we also looked at some of the stuff you submitted.
Okay. So would you be presenting the findings then before they go, if we're here today?
So zoning ordinances don't actually have findings of fact.
Okay. Okay.
Is there anyone else who has comments to be brought at this time?
I don't speak well, so I apologize, I get nervous. My name's Cassie Davenport, 4128 North, County Road 50 East. I guess a couple of concerns I have. We met with one of the officials in the union company, RES, at a farmer's home, and we had questions, and we never got straight answers. And we were concerned because we would have one right behind us. We came out of the meeting concerned, but we were also concerned because a lot of the information just was not, I'm wondering how scrambled it was when it was given to other people, when it was given to the Commissioners and stuff. And RES to me, and I know that they're not involved anymore, but my big problem is they told us, and this I believe, this was one thing the man told me, I believe, he said, when we come in, we'll build those towers, we'll get them in there, and then we'll sell those contracts out. So when you talk about responsibility with these companies, after, say they do come in, some company comes in, they sell those contracts two years down the line. Who's responsible for that? Do you take up new contracts with these new people? And what if their standards are different? What if theirs are lower? What if theirs are higher? I mean, there's just, that is a question I have for you. Because what guarantee do you have that those towers are going to be maintained by the same people for 20 years? And that's what the RES, the gentleman that talked to us, he said 20 years. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what he told us. Because that's how a lone farmer would make the money that he would make from that land. And the other thing is the personal with the families that were torn up. And this comes to pass, you did, you did some good things with, you know, looking at the ordinance, I appreciate it. But I think these should be banned. Why put them here when it causes so much trouble in the community?
James DeWitt, 3137 West County Road 800 North. Now, you say you've studied all the ordinances for the counties and government interns. A lot about the counties that's abandoned. Last I counted, Tippecanoe County, Cosiostco County, they had a 3,900-foot setback. No shadow flicker, I think 30 decibels. Does anybody ever talk to any of the counties that's not doing this? Yes, we have. Listen to them.
Margaret Hubensaw, 2851 East, State Route 16, Uso. I wasn't going to speak this morning, but something I feel like hasn't been brought up. Okay, we get these in. Whose responsibility and whose expense is it going to be to get these things taken out eventually? And it'll be our children and grandchildren who have the responsibility. What's the cost going to be if you want, if they're not going to be used anymore? They sit there. Who's it up to to remove them? Whose responsibility is it to pay for them at the other end when they're done with them? That needs to be thought about too. Because those of us who don't want them really don't want them, period. But I don't know whether a lot of people have thought about how long they're going to have to look at these things when the company's done with them, when they're no use anymore. Thanks.
At this time then, Krista, do we have any written correspondence?
Yes.
And let you read those into the record for us.
To whom it may concern, I am writing today to share the economic impact that wind farms have had on Benton County. The economic impact in Benton County from the wind farms has been tremendous. Our county commissioners and county council have worked together to develop a plan from the beginning through the year 2038 for the $31 million economic development money coming in from the wind farms. They were able to pay off the county's debts. Our school corporation has received $3 million. Our road system received $35 million upgrades, and the county has helped upgrade police vehicles and fire trucks and provide more equipment to our first responders. Our EMS department has gone from having EMTs to paramedics, which is huge in rural communities that is over 30 minutes from the nearest hospital. Our libraries all have received money and benefited from the wind farms. The assessed values of homes in our county have risen 3% rural, 6% in towns, and we have a lower tax rate due to the economic development money from the wind farms. The wind farms have brought over 90 new jobs to the county as well as a national training center that employs an additional 100-plus people at peak times of the year. Our landowners wanted the wind farms here in the county, so our county officials developed their roles to make that happen and not stand in their way. To date, my office has not taken any complaints of flicker, infranoise, killing of birds or bats, or any negative effects. Sincerely, Paul Jackson, Director of Benton County Economic Development.
Are there any other written records at this time?
Six.
Okay, at this time, the public comment period was closed. Do we have a motion to bring Resolution 1901 to a vote? Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Is there any other further discussion at this point in time?
I have one thing I want to bring up. Erin, I have a question. There should be, I think there's a need for a guideline for complaints and resolutions. And I don't know how you would develop that.
That would be working with the Commissioners, because they're going to be ones that are actually fielding all of that. We can put something in there that asks the Commissioners to have a process or something like that, but it's going to be them that actually create that process.
Well, I think there's a need for that, because it's a, it's a real situation of if you have a complaint, what's the process to get that complaint resolved and the timeliness that's required? So that's, that's one thing that, that's one thing that I think is important that we, that we have to do is address to the Commissioners. So we did specifically put something in our flicker about that, but just like, just like the process of how ordinance is.
How, what you need to document, what, timing, whatever.
Right. What do you need? If Mr. Woodhouse has a complaint of noise, like he said, you know, what's my resolution? Like Ryan said, it's over 60. What's the process? How does he say, I think it's over 60, do I, what do I do?
Yeah, and so the ordinance actually specifies that would be Commissioners that would handle it, so the Commissioners would be the ones that would actually have a process on how that works.
Well, I think they need to know that that needs to be addressed. I mean, you need, you got to have rules and how do you get them. That's my one.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or discussion at this time? We have a motion on the floor to approve as presented by the committee.
With my few typos, I just want to make sure.
That's right, that's correct. All in favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we can do that. Let it roll, go vote.
Jim Donato?
I'm sorry, and I don't want to be a pain, but I don't want somebody to say that it wasn't, did you get a second?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear the second. I just wanted, I want to make sure that we are legit. Okay, thank you.
Krista, proceed, please.
Jim Donato?
Yes.
John Guy?
Yes.
Josh Devani?
Yes.
Mike Kinsey?
Yes.
Stacy Odom?
Yes.
Krista Pollan, yes. Jim Sailors?
Yes.
Fred Sehans?
Yes.
Brian Reed?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is made and seconded and approved. This resolution has been approved at this time.
So I just thought, just for the public that's here, let them know how this works. Basically, the Plan Commission is recommending approval to the Commissioners, and the Commissioners will actually hear it and finalize the approval, so just as a courtesy to the public.
One other thing to let them know, any amendments we talked about, it can be amended?
Right, so if the Commissioners decide to amend it, it will get sent back to Plan Commission to review those amendments, and then the Plan Commission will then send it back with yes or no on those amendments, and then the Commissioners can send it back. So it's a back and forth until there's kind of this resolution.
I just, I think everybody needs to know that the resolution is now going to the Commissioners. Amendments can be made to this. Doesn't necessarily mean this is how it's going to be 100%.
They should have been made here, Jim.
You're exactly right.
That's why we have those recommendations. It has to go to the Commissioner.
Thanks for rubber stamping your opinion. We appreciate it.
Yeah. But I think that way it can be changed if there's changes that need to be made to it.
As they should have been here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're, we.
We have a motion to adjourn, second. All in favor, say aye. Close, same side.